County Commission meeting, if you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning. Just a reminder to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender and Robert left. Then you'll have to go to Carol if you need a listening device. With that, we will begin with the routine business. I'd like to have consideration of a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Benacott, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add authorization for the auditor to publish a notice of hearing for the Barn Inc. for malt beverage license and wine license applications under Item 7, notices and requests.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to add that authorization that Commissioner Bender just read. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Now we'll vote to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
I'll make that motion, or second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of February 23rd. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the commission minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Bills to be paid, $632,066.55.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the bills to be paid. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Jeff, did you have any comment?
No, I was just going to say that the bills today include 180, almost 184,000 for Metro Communications.
Thank you. Personnel actions, consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the routine actions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is to recognize the significant employee anniversaries for March. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver, Human Resources. I have a short list for you, but some impressive lengths of service to look at. I've got Dennis Sutter in Facilities, who's now served 10 years of employment with us. Sandy Kinder, who's an accountant at Highway, celebrating 15 years of service. And we have Lauren Dykshorn, who's a CEO at the jail. He's celebrating five years of part-time experience, but I think it merits noting that he also served 20 years of full-time service with us as well. So really, we're looking at over 25 years of service. So our things go out to them.
See that they're still working hard today, because I don't see any of those here, but thank you for your service and we appreciate your commitment to the county. Item C is to recognize the significant volunteers in county government in February.
Speaking of commitment, many of the names on this list are names that you see almost every month. Again, a very long list, 276 volunteers helping us out in 11 different areas of county.
Thank you, Carrie. Very, very dedicated group of people. There's no application for abatement today. Item 7 is, 7A is to authorize the county auditor to publish the notice of hearing for retail on-off sale malt beverage license for Great Life and Rocky Run Golf Course and transfer of an on-sale liquor license from Norby's Rocky Run to Great Life Rocky Run Golf Course with that legal description in Del Rapids.
Move to set the hearing date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Item 7A. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is a notice from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers of permit, of a permit pending to construct pond roots of Highlands development consisting of a stormwater detention pond, a golf course and residential lot, again at that address in Minnehaha County. Is there a motion? Don't need one, is it? It's just a notice, I'm sorry. Item C is to authorize county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Highway Department project MC 102-104-109OL-2016 asphalt overlay on approximately 12 miles of county highway. DJ, do you have any comments on that?
Unless you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to authorize publication of this.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to publish the notice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Item D is to authorize the auditor's office to publish the notice of hearing on March 22nd, 2016 for retail on-off sale malt beverage license and retail on-off sale wine license for the Barn Inc. track, address at Wall Lake Township, Minnehaha County.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay. I didn't know if you were scratching your head or...
I was scratching my head.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second to publish that notice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Item 8 is planning and zoning notices. This is the first reading to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider rezoning 16-01, to rezone from agricultural district to commercial district in Dawson Track at that location located at the intersection of County Highway 130 and County Highway 133, Crooks Renner exit.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and as you read, I'm requesting that the auditor be allowed to publish a hearing notice for a hearing to be held on March 22nd, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. in this room. The property is approximately 3.89 acres and is located as what we would call the Crooks exit. The applicant is proposing to develop that as a commercial site. It has gone before the Planning Commission on February 22nd, 2016 and received unanimous, a recommendation of approval unanimously by the Planning Commission. I've attached the minutes. There's a map of the subject property that I've attached for your review as well as sort of a preliminary site plan that the applicant has provided for us to review. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have. Otherwise, we'll be having the second reading and the final hearing on March 22nd.
Okay, thank you. Scott, any questions or comments for Mark? Everybody's fine with it evidently.
We need a motion to...
Yep, we will. We need a motion to publish that notice of hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Motion and a second to publish the notice hearing for March 2nd, you indicated?
22nd.
22nd. I'm just not with it today. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item 9, there is no petition for compromise. Now is the opportunity for public comment. If anyone has anything that they'd like to discuss that's not on the agenda, please come forward. Item 10 is to authorize the chair to sign a 2016 lease agreement between Minnehaha County and Metro Communications. Mr. Wilson?
Morning Commissioners. Robert Wilson, County Commission Office, have before you for your consideration this morning the 2016 lease agreement for Minnehaha, for Metro Communications' space lease of the Public Safety Building. The terms of the lease are the same as we had last year. The space consists of 4296 square feet at a rate of $11.40 per square foot. And this lease agreement was approved by the Metro Management Council at their last meeting last Wednesday. We bring it forward for your consideration and I would stand by for any questions. You also have Darren Ketchum with Metro Communications here and I know he'd be available to answer any questions you may have of him.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions of Robert or Darren? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have a quick question for Robert. So my understanding is that this lease is, for all intents and purposes, just a renewal under the exact terms and conditions of the existing lease? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Darren, do you have any comments you'd like to add? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the lease?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the 2016 lease agreement with Metro Communications Agency. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Excuse me. Item number 11 is to authorize the chair to sign the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks Land and Water Conservation Fund Compliance Inspection Report. Scott?
Good morning again, Scott Anderson, Planning Department. Today, I am bringing forth for you a small bookkeeping item. We have received over the past 50 years, three small grants from the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks for improvements at Wall Lake. One of the grants was issued in 1967 for approximately $13,000. One was issued in 1987 for approximately $30,000 and another grant was issued in 1991 for approximately $6,000. The Game Fish and Parks requires that every five years, we do this inventory and provide an affidavit that the improvements are still in place, that they're functioning. I've included that for you. I need to have the, I'm asking to have the chairman be authorized to sign the report so I can return it to Game Fish and Parks, that the improvements are still there. I have gone out and inspected them. They were for burying some underground power lines in 1967, acquiring some, some land adjacent to the right-of-way along the beach. That was in 1967. And the other ones were purchasing some playground equipment and constructing the bathrooms out there in 1987.
Any questions for Scott? If not, could I have a motion to authorize the signature of the Conservation Fund Compliance Inspection Report?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Item 12 is to authorize the Emergency Management Director to sign an agreement between the Minnehaha County and South Dakota Office of Emergency Management accepting a 2015 hazardous materials emergency preparation grant award.
Good morning Commissioners, Lind Young, Emergency Management Office. As you know, the state fire school is being held in Minnehaha County on June 2nd through the 4th. We hope to bring in approximately 600 firefighters from across the state of South Dakota and their families to spend some time here during that training session. Part of the training session obviously revolves around hazardous materials and the consequences that they can have within the communities that the volunteer firefighters provide service for. So attached to have a grant for $8,800. That'll cover the instructional, instruction cost for two different classes. One titled ethanol emergencies and the other one titled railroad emergencies. The grant pays for 80% of the total cost and then the other 20% is actually provided by match, by attendees attending the training session. So when it's all said and done, there's zero cost to the county except for administration of the program. So, and if I could have just a little bit of latitude with this?
Absolutely.
All right. So the other thing with the fire school that we want to announce today is that we're trying to break the mold and get more people, volunteers to attend this event. We are partnering with the Ram Cota Hotel out there. And our keynote speaker on June 2nd will be South Dakota's own Chad Greenway from the Minnesota Vikings. He's coming. So we are encouraging firefighters from across the state to register today. Is the opening day of registration. For their $60 that they're going to pay their family and the firefighter, will get a free meal to the banquet with Chad Greenway. The firefighter will get all of his training for the next two days along with two additional meals. So for 60 bucks, a fireman gets four meals, his family gets two, plus a great message from Chad Greenway, all brought to you by the Minnehaha County Firefighters Association along with the State of South Dakota and the State Fire Association. So I would encourage people to go out and attend today. And like I said, we'll have a great message from Chad Greenway from the Minnesota Vikings, who was born and raised just west of here in Plankton, Mount Vernon, so.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Lynn, you know, obviously, being on your volunteer fire department is a great way to serve your own family and serve your neighbors. We're in the process now of recruiting new members, isn't that right?
Yep.
And we, as a county, we provide some scholarship help for additional training that they need to get, right?
Yep. So the county, we provide training dollars through methods like this, grant dollars. The county also reimburses volunteer fire and EMS folks for their continuing education on the EMT side. We host the state fire school every 10 years approximately. I work with the fire groups to do that. So this is a once-in-a-10-year event for us and one of the things we do is collect sponsorships for, once again, the meals, the, you know, the putting on of the keynote speaker, some of those things. Because literally, where can you go to an event for two days of training, four meals for 60 bucks? So once again, we are looking for sponsors and the county assists with that by not only giving my office, but other technical assistance. We've used the planning department with GIS and some of those other things. So there's a whole lot of in-kind stuff, but the Fire Chiefs Association, just like everybody else, still needs dollars to run on. The county, to answer your question, does help provide some of those for continuing education, but we are looking for sponsors for this event also.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Could we get a motion to sign the agreement for the grant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the grant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is to consider a bid award for Minnehaha County 130-139 MS-16 micro-surfacing on approximately 11 miles of county highways 130 and 139. Bids are open February 24th, 2016. DJ Boothie?
Good morning Commissioners, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. On the 24th, we received four bids for our annual micro-surfacing project. We had an engineer's estimate for the 11 miles of work, $530,000. The bids ranged from $399,666.50 to $549,165.15. Our staff has analyzed all the bid tabulations and is asking for your authorization to award and sign a contract with Monarch Oil Company, who is a company that we've worked with in the past and they do great work and we're happy that they read low and wish to move forward with the great savings on this project.
Questions to DJ? I have a question. Do you remember what the price was last year for a similar project?
So the, the project that we had last year, we used those bid item costs to estimate our 11 miles worth of work for this year and that translated to the $530,000 estimate, the exact cost. And so because of the change in oil prices, that's the savings that we've seen. $130,000 less than what we would have paid last year for the same amount of work.
Wow. One good thing.
I celebrate every good thing.
Yes, it is.
I'll move to accept the bid.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the bid. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item number 14 is to consider a resolution to participate in a bridge inspection program using the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Replacement Funds to hire Banner Associates. DJ?
Commissioners, as you're aware, every two years, we are required to inspect all of our bridges. Every four years, we are required to inspect our box culverts. We inspect about half of the bridges every year. So we have a little bit of a program there. This year, we have, I think, the east half of the bridges that we, east half of the county that we're inspecting the bridges, we participate in the state's inspection program where they hire a consultant for us of our selection and then they pay approximately 80% of the cost and we pay a 20% match. This year, we have selected Banner Associates again. We've been using those, those guys for a few years now and they do good work for us. And so this motion today is to, or this resolution today is to notify the state that we again intend on using Banner Associates and that will give the state authorization to begin negotiations to enter into a contract. And then we'll come to you again, probably in a month or so, with a contract that the state prepares for us to concur on because we have a shared cost.
Any questions for DJ? Can I get a motion for the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the resolution to participate in the inspection program with the state. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15 is a briefing on a South Dakota Obligation Recovery Center and options for county participation. Carol Muller?
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office. The Obligations Recovery Center, which we are referring to as the ORC, it's a new acronym we're getting used to, was created during the 2015 South Dakota Legislative Session. That was House Bill 1228. The purpose of the ORC is to be a central repository for the identification, the registration oversight and collection of debts owed to any agency or department of the state of South Dakota. South Dakotas have the option to have court-appointed costs included in the ORC. Hence the reason why I'm here today with a briefing, because in the next couple of weeks, the courts are asking the commission to say, do you want to have court-appointed attorneys collected through the ORC or do you want to leave that process alone? And I will tell you that internally, we've had a lot of discussion. We keep having more questions about it. And so that's why I wanted to do a briefing prior to a couple of weeks before you go through and have this conversation. The ORC's goal is to be operational in April. The ORC will include the collection of court-appointed obligations for adult criminal proceedings in Circuit and magistrate courts. Examples of financial obligations include restitution, fines, costs, fees or assessments, and of course, the county-appointed attorneys if the county chooses to participate. While the ORC passed, the legislation for this was passed in 2015. The ORC is just being developed. A person who has an outstanding balance and is not making regular payments to the ORC will not be able to obtain any motor vehicle, motorcycle, or vehicle registration, driver's license, hunting license, fishing license, state park permit or camping permit unless the debt and cost recovery fee have been paid in full or the person has entered into a payment plan with the ORC and the payment plan is current. To bring that back a little bit, and I will comment that Carl is here from the courts, because I know at some point, I'm going to have to ask Carl a question. We also know that in the process of doing all this, we need to be communicating between the counties and the states. Hence, Monty is here today. We've had him in on the conversations with IT and Kim is here from the auditor's office. So to bring that back just a little bit, after somebody is court-ordered with whatever fines, fees, restitution that they have, if they have not set up a payment plan and are not getting that ball rolling within 90 days, it will flush out and move to the ORC. Correct, Carl? Okay. So within 90 days, that's what happens. And once you're in that ORC process, there are a lot of sticks that the state brings to the table that you will not be able to get unless you're current with a payment plan. Now, a few questions that we've had as we've worked through this. We've said, if the commission decided to participate in the ORC, where are we in the repayment process? And that is in an IP ruling. And to let you know, out of seven things that are repaid, we are number five. The first that is paid back, so if somebody is making payments to the ORC, restitution is first, then liquidated costs, the surcharge for court automation, the surcharge for victims' compensation, number five is court-appointed attorney fees, which is us, and then after that are city, state, county costs and fines. Now, if you're ready for some more figures on this, the auditor's office went back and looked at some of our numbers on collection, because as you know, we carry at any time, Kim, about $55 to $65 million on the books for liens that is owed to us and, and we have a process that you're familiar with, that people come in and pay those things off. One of the numbers that was pulled up from 2015 is that of the $599,000 recovered for attorney fees in 2015, $446,000 of those came through the clerk of courts, which means these were collections on court-ordered amounts. Now, as you move forward with consideration of which way you want to do, do you want to retain the same process because you have that option of doing the same process with leaning everybody up? There are a few things that we would throw out for consideration. At this time, the courts do not collect social security numbers and as we know, it's, that makes it more of a challenge to go through and do collections when you don't have those social security numbers. For clarification, somebody who is found innocent in the courts...
Not guilty.
Not guilty, thank you. Who is found not guilty will not, we still have the collection process for court-appointed attorneys and that is going to happen, that will come back to us anyway as a lien process, because that's not going to be an opportunity because they don't have any court costs assigned to them. It is unknown if the commission would have the ability to compromise once the debt becomes part of the ORC. We've asked that question and for consideration on that. There's also the conversation of what is your philosophical decisions as to how you want to collect money. It is our understanding that the commission can make a decision at this point and amend that decision at a future point. And the Circuit Court, while not requiring it, would truly like to have both counties, Lincoln and Minnehaha County, on the same page as for the decision that would be made and we can certainly appreciate that. Now, one thing I want to mention is that once a debt goes to the ORC, there is a 20% surcharge, additional cost that's put onto it for the collection process. So if somebody owed $500 and wasn't making payments on it, it immediately goes to $600 once it gets swept over to the ORC. So we recognize this is a lot of information. We would stand by for questions that you would have.
Commissioner Bender?
Carol, so that, that surcharge that you just referenced, is that one of the two surcharges that gets paid before the county gets paid? There's a surcharge, court automation, surcharge, victims' compensation, or how does that surcharge get paid?
You know what? That's a question we actually haven't asked. And have you guys had that discussion, Carl?
Please come forward, Carl. We don't want you to walk all the way over here for nothing.
No, this will be quick, though. My understanding, Commissioner, is that, Carl Tonis, Court Administration, my understanding is that if the ORC gets a payment of $100, for example, they will take their 20% from that and then distribute the 80 back to the court and then the court will distribute it according to that, that ranking that Carol mentioned.
I just have a basic question. Who really is the ORC? Is that a new branch or division of another agency, new employees? Is this a new system or...
No. The obligation, the state is contracting...
Hold all of that?
The, the state is contracting with a private collection agency to do this.
But their internal staff is part of the Bureau of Administration, I believe, with the state. There's limited state staff for that.
So the 20% collection fee is really exactly what that is, is a collection agency?
Yes.
But...
Commissioner Kelly?
In theory, if a guy had a $500 obligation, didn't pay it, it went to ORC, then it's going to become a $600 obligation, so...
Correct.
We theoretically would get 100 cents on the dollar of that, of that deal. How much were billed? You said that we collected just about $600,000.
Yes, and the majority come that is billed?
I mean, is that 100%? Was that money collected?
Yes.
Okay. What percent is that of what the total billing for court-appointed is?
Small.
Really? It's less than 1%, isn't it?
Well, on an annual basis, it's probably more than that, but it's, yeah, we have a lot of debts.
I mean, the state's got a big stick when they start talking motorcycle license, driver's license, hunting license. That's a stick we don't have.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
Let me just say that the stick is Pam Nelson. She won't be giving you your license plates or a refund. I guess from my point of view, I think it was ill-considered by the legislature to put that heavy sanction on these folks and to additionally criminalize them with driving without a license, which let's face it, probably went on... without a license, which, let's face it, probably one out of eight people is driving without a license right now, and a driver's license, I mean, at least they look like they don't have a license. And, you know, the additional sanctions of, say, hunting without a license, et cetera, people are going to gain additional criminal charges, et cetera, and will never be able to get themselves out of that rut. And so I have real questions about the idea of going forward with this, and twenty percent is certainly a large penalty to have to add on to it, and again, I just have these concerns.
Kirsten, go ahead.
If I just may dovetail on Commissioner Bar's comment, though, to be clear, what you're deciding here is whether those court-ordered attorney fees go into the system. The costs, fines, restitution, they're going to go anyway, so those sticks are coming out no matter what you do. I'm just, to be clear, it's just whether we're adding our collection to that pile or not. The state's going to do the other ones.
So, basically, we're going to stay fifth regardless in the collection process?
Not necessarily, because our liens right now, if we were to keep them in our current system, would essentially attach to real, and we don't do a lot of attachment to personal property, but could attach to personal property. It's a very different vehicle from the sticks used by the state for their new system. It's a different, it's a different attachment process.
Commissioner Kelly, I think was first. And I think, I mean, this is an obligation, this is a bill run up by a defendant that was found guilty and served time, I can't have a whole lot of sympathy for the fact that the county ought to be paying all the expenses and not get reconciled. So, I don't agree with Jeff at all, I think, I think this maybe appears to give us a better opportunity to collect more on the court-appointed attorney fees that we're not getting right now. Commissioner Bender?
I'd like to just piggyback a little bit off of what Kirsten was saying, just to make sure I understand, the point he was making is that if we choose not to put the court-appointed attorney's fees into this system, then in essence, we could get paid last, because they use their stick to collect everything else, and if they aren't using that stick to collect the attorney's fees, then they'll be motivated and have reason to pay everything else first, and we would fall down to whenever they're selling personal or selling property, arguably.
Please respond.
While we're not in the same list there, as you can imagine, if I'm someone who has all these different debts out there, am I going to want to pay off the one to get my driver's license back first, or am I going to pay off the one so I can refinance my house? I think that says it all. I mean, I think, I think in a, even though we're not in the same pile...
Right, yeah, practically speaking.
Practically speaking, it's likely we would fall down the list, so.
You know, I certainly agree with Dick, that's an excellent point, but, you know, without a driver's license, I don't get to have a job, so I'm going to have to rob casinos or sell drugs or something. Do we want to increase the burden on the traditionally unemployable folk in our community, or do we want to work with them to get them out of that rut? I see this as being short-sighted but knee-jerk reaction by our conservative legislature, and again, it's going to criminalize more and more of our population, and then we're going to say, how come those people aren't working? Where did he get that cell phone? How come he's smoking cigarettes? And it's because they had to rob and steal for it, that they have all those things. I just hate to see us, you know, again, make people unemployable and hold them on the lowest rung of our society without any opportunity.
Commissioner Kelly? Apparently, our liberal friends... Let's not make this political right now. Want to make accountability not important, and I think there is accountability, and I think we need to hold these people accountable for what they're doing and what their obligations are running up, and to say that a conservative legislature is just creating more time...
Knee-jerk.
...is absurd. I think it's absurd.
You know, again, though, you can't get a job, what are you going to do? How are you going to pay it if you don't have a job?
Why did you do the crime in the first place?
I don't know, why did you do the next crime, is what I'm worried about.
I think we've lost track of where we're going with this conversation, Carol?
Yes, just, I would come back to you, because it is a deep conversation that you have to have on this. And as Kirsten stated, that there will be, this is going forward, you only have a decision to make regarding one part of this, of part of this. I would also stress that we have the opportunity to leave it alone for now and allow the ORC and the state to work out their administrative rules, which we understand have not been written yet, correct, and understand how that process is going to go and give it some time, because we do have some concerns about how this communication will take place between all the entities that are out there. So, I just want to put a plug in for the fact that it is something that you could decide to leave alone at this point and come back in six months, nine months, twelve months, and change your decision that's out there, but it is an important decision for you to make.
Commissioner Bender?
So, you are confident, or have some confidence from the statute or from the folks in peer, that this is a situation where we can kind of jump in and jump out?
That is a direction, Carl, that you've asked.
My only question is, is if the administrative rules haven't been written yet, where's the guarantee that that, what you just assumed was going to happen is going to happen? Are we going to get any input, any administrative function, if you will, to be able to have some input on what is written into those rules? Sorry.
You can walk.
I appreciate your entertaining this item, Commissioner, because it is complex, as Carol says. To be precise on that point, the administrative, there was some concern raised in the legislature this session, that the baseball bats that are part of this collection process were too severe, and so there was a bill floated this session that would have taken away some of those baseball bats, driver's license, for example. There was a lot of discussion between the legislative committees and the Bureau of Administration on how those bats would be swung, and at what point they would take somebody's license away, for example. How much time would they give them, how much, you know, how severe are they going to be? That's the portion that the Bureau of Administration has not yet worked out. The court has its process as to how we're going to pass it to the ORC. The ORC has their process worked out as to how they're going to pass it to the collection agency, the piece that's still missing is how the collection agencies are going to swing those bats.
Carl, formally, we need to have your name again and address.
Sorry, Commissioner, Carl Tonis, Court Administration.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kelly? Carl, they can set up a payment plan, I mean, it isn't as though they're going to pay the whole thing at once.
Yes, Commissioner, that's right.
Who's going to make that decision, the collection agency, or is...
Initially...
Sometimes those guys are a little aggressive.
Yes, while the court still has it, the judges can, or for lower-level obligations, smaller amounts, that's done in the clerk's office. Once we pass it off, then it'll be the ORC or the collection agency, that's one more of those, that piece of the fine detail regulations or process, or administrative rules that they've not yet written. So, yeah, the payment plan would be established by the court at first, if they miss that payment plan and we pass it off, then the ORC gets it.
Well, I assume you're going to be somewhat involved with the administrative rules.
I would hope so.
Yeah, and I guess I hope that somehow in there we can do that, because I, you know, one thing I do agree with Jeff is it's unfortunate, there's so many obligations that guy can't get a job, for instance.
That's true.
But on the other hand, I still think there's an accountability issue there, and somehow, I guess, the heart of the state should be involved, or the heart of the court should be involved in some of these hard decisions that otherwise a collection agency might just go for the throat.
You're right, Commissioner, and some of the pieces we have yet to work out, for example, is if the county compromises the amount due after we pass it off, it seems to me we've got to work out some way to modify that amount due with the ORC. Likewise, if a judge modifies the amount due, we've got to inform the ORC of that modification. Or, for example, if a restitution victim, if a crime victim gets a payment or gets a civil judgment against that defendant and collects on the civil judgment, then there's got to be some way to adjust that amount due with the ORC. So, those are sort of the mechanical details that we do still need to work out, and just as you say, I think the court needs to stay involved in some degree, and the county, even after we pass it off.
Kirsten, do you have a question?
And that was just one point I was going to make to you, as it stands right now, it's uncertain what that does to your compromise power. Obviously, this act did not affect those statutes in any way in Title VII, but I think it's up in the air as a practical matter, when this debt goes to this agency, how we're going to monitor what exactly is outstanding out there, and what, how your powers interact with compromise settling, setting an alternative percentage amount. The other thing I just want to touch on as a point here is, the reason we can kind of jump in at a later time is, the impression I'm getting is that court administration is kind of saying to the county, okay, you know, once these are court-ordered, they go into the system, they're required to by statute. So, I think it's the judges who are saying, hey, if the county wants to keep their own system, we won't court-order the attorney's lien. So, that's why we're getting a little leeway here, it's, the court administration's basically telling us that they won't put them into the system, I think we can go back later and ask them to do that if you wish, but that's why they're not going into the system at this point. If you elect not to, is court administration is saying, well, we won't make them court-ordered, we'll just set them to lien right away, just as a clarifying point there.
Commissioner Bender?
Does anybody have, has there been any guidance, does anybody have any idea what kind of timeframe we're looking at to get these administrative rules out and finalized?
Well, it's, Carl emailed me a couple of weeks ago, and I, after I read the email about three times, said, I think we need to meet, and we've had a lot of conversations down in the weeds, especially when it comes down to the communication. What Carl is being told is that they want to have things up and running the first of April, that's a very short time period, asking for a decision, which is why I'm briefing you at this particular time. So, and that is, again, one reason why I will again state, you have the opportunity to let things get up and running and join them in a few months if you choose to.
Monty, if you wouldn't mind, the first of April, just shock up my spine, is that possible?
Monty Wadambak, Minnehaha County, IT Director. Yeah, if we were to make the decision to change from our current lien process to the process of using the ORC, we would have a lot of details to figure out in a very short period of time. That may have to, it would probably require some programming on our side to try to figure out, okay, we've got liens that need to be county aid liens, because they were for someone who didn't have, you know, the court-mandated expenses, for someone who was not found guilty. And then we also have to work with the ORC to somehow, you know, have our own documentation for, you know, what payments were made and how much the balance is, none of that is figured out. That would be a challenge and a new way to somehow have a check and balance and a process to keep track of that debt that someone else is collecting and then paying us, hopefully with a report or something, that we could then go and put those payments against our documented balances for those folks. So, yes, it would be a challenge.
If the administrative rules have not been developed, how do you even go ahead and start developing software?
We don't.
Well, we're thirty days or whatever away from that.
Yeah.
Sounds like we got a pretty fast horse to ride.
I think it would be very difficult to change to this new method immediately. I'll be honest, I don't know how we would do it.
Yeah.
Right away.
I understand. Other questions? I mean, this is a new thing for us, obviously, and it's a whole new way of doing business, so is there a time that the Lincoln County Commission is going to address this, since I understand the need for kind of a cooperative consolidated method, if you will?
I don't know the answer to that, although I did ask them if they would like me to send their memo down there, and they can, I've given them complete permission to lift and use the same information, and we didn't think there was any point in all of us spending time trying to figure this whole concept and going into that, so I have not had that conversation yet, so. And I would like to schedule this for, I think, two weeks out, which is, what, the fifteenth? We could go the week later on there, we might know a little bit more information. And it gives you a chance to have some more discussion, some more thought process to it, get some input.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I actually agree with my fellow commissioners on a number of these points, and I think that, you know, perhaps, you know, my fear at seeing this suddenly like this escalates my reaction to it a little bit. Perhaps the solution is somewhere in between, and certainly, I would love to collect more of the money that our county is owed, and so anyway, I think we had a nice beginning discussion here, and I would point out that thirty days from now is April Fool's Day.
We always appreciate your insight.
Any other comments? Thank you, Carol, and it sounds like, Carl, you and the rest of the group have a lot to work on and try to figure out, and we appreciate keeping us up to date, obviously, as you go through the process. Thank you. Item number sixteen is an update and status report on the legislative session and the bills that impact Minnehaha County. Mr. Wilson?
Morning Commissioners, Robert Wilson again. I don't have a whole lot of new information for you today on this legislative update. I'm going to sound very familiar to what I've told you the last couple of weeks, we're still really waiting on the, really, the main revenue bills that we're following, Senate Bill Two, House Bill 1005. It certainly appears that all of the revenue bills are really waiting for some of the larger revenue items for, the legislature is looking at this year, looks, appears that they're going to deal with those larger issues understandably, and then move down the line to some of these others. Just a point on that, when we had Senate Bill Two on the House agenda yesterday, and it was high enough that it certainly looked like it was going to be considered, and as they got to that agenda item, that was referred to the bottom of the calendar. So, I think we just should, at this point, until we hear differently, understand that this is going to follow some of the other big funding pieces that they need to figure out. Going through the list of bills that we've been tracking, I'll just highlight a couple along the way. House Bill 1102 was signed by the governor, and that increases the allowable review time for bids. The projects that have been put out to bid, we, currently under statute, we have thirty days to review bids and make a decision, this bumps that up to forty-five days. We have a bill in Senate Judiciary this morning, House Bill 1129, an act to allow concealed pistol in the Capitol in any county courthouses with a concealed, enhanced concealed carry permit. So, we're following that one, the association is following that one, and again, that's in the hearing this morning. We got Senate Bill Two, as I mentioned. Early in the session, I mentioned Senate Bill 27 to you, that was the one that emergency management brought to us early on with the, just an interest, because it would revise personnel requirements and repeal the hardship exemption, as we dug into that one, realized that it was really permissive, would allow us to adopt that if we wanted to. Obviously, you have ambulance ordinance, and so it certainly could continue to maintain our practices as we have. And again, we're just, the main bills that we're watching at this point are going to wait until some of the bigger items are dealt with.
Robert? Thank you. Any liaison reports? Thank you. Any liaison reports?
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, we went over this in Building Committee, but I think I'll just, Metro Management Council authorized Darren to, to go ahead and begin looking at, at possibilities of a, of a new backup center. Some of the things that were discussed is the fires, there's going to be a fire station out southeast, I believe, built in 17 maybe, or 18. And that would be a good place for Metro to have a backup center. They, we've also pretty much come to agreement that the, the primary is going to stay at the Public Safety Building. So, there, but Darren will be looking and coming back to us with some opportunities out there as to where we go. And I suppose, and we have to have a good, we have to have a backup center that we can move into when we do some remodeling over here, because he's going to need some additional space over here. But, yeah, we don't want to go over there and upset that operation until we have a backup in place. And, you know, we're two to three years away from the sheriff's office moving out of, out of the Public Safety Building, and that's probably where we would do any increases, so. Other reports? Any new business? Any old business?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner?
I, today we had a Building Committee meeting, and the jail was not on that agenda. And it seems like it's been some months since it was on our Building Committee agenda. And although supposedly things are moving forward outside of that, I, I just, I don't have the perception that we're making any, any progress. And to delay indefinitely is, is hopefully not our plan. And so, I would urge us to consider moving forward on decisions regarding that.
Any other questions, comments? We need to go into executive session for personnel-related issues?
Second.
We have a motion of second to go into exec session for personnel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes.